We do have a quorum, and so we will proceed without objection on with the agenda that has been publicly advertised. Agenda item number one is report of the chairman, and I would like to announce and to congratulate fellow Commissioner Beth White for her having been reappointed by President Obama for a second term. We are excited that she will continue to be with us.
Thank you.
Although from Texas. And I'll also note that, as you may be aware, we had previously, it was thought that the FBI square guidelines would come before us this month. That has now been likely postponed until January next month. So we will look at the square guidelines again for the Hoover site for next month, January 5th, Commission meeting. Agenda item number two is the report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and season's greetings. I just have a few announcements to make. We have a few new staff that have joined us. First, we have Karen Sherhold. She joined our physical planning division as a community planner. Karen is an architect and urban designer who most recently worked for Grandi Architects. We also have Serena Singh, and she joined the Policy and Research Division as a community planner. She's both an architect and a landscape architect. Serena joins us from Stan Tech Consulting. And finally, I'd like to acknowledge that this is community planner Jeff Hinkle's final dance commission. Jeff joined NCPC in 2001, and has served the commission with great distinction over the last 15 years. He most recently served in our Urban Design and Plan Review Division, and also served as our agency's zoning board of just a representative. And we're also a bit envious of Jeff because he's taking a year off to travel, and his first stop is Antarctica. So, travel safely, Jeff. Stay warm.
Stay warm.
And that concludes my presentation today.
Thank you. I would second Mr. Acosta's welcoming of our new staff, and also second with bittersweetly Jeff's retirement after 15 years from NCPC. But we wish you well. Agenda item number three is legislative update, Ms. Schuyler.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
And agenda item number four is the consent calendar, and you have four items before you. Item 4A is for the south entrance renovation of the National Museum of Natural History at 1,000 Constitution Avenue. That is submitted to us by the Smithsonian. Item 4B is for an antenna installation at the Prettyman U.S. Courthouse at 333 Constitution Avenue. That's brought to us from GSA. Item 4C is the National Air and Space Collections Center expansion in Chantilly, Virginia, submitted to us by the Smithsonian. And last, item 4D is for perimeter security and site improvements at the American Pharmacists' Association building at 2215 Constitution Avenue, and that is submitted to us by the Department of State. Those have been submitted to you. Are there any questions on any items? Ms. White.
I have a comment and a couple of questions, but first, I also want to congratulate Mr. Hinkle and tell him that we will miss you, and I've encouraged him to keep a blog about all the places that he's visiting, and I'll be so curious to see what you do next.
I will.
On the Smithsonian, I just wanted to make the general comment that I was so pleased to see how beautiful the south entrance renovation, item 4A. And so often, when you're trying to retrofit something, especially with a staircase to make it accessible, it comes across as an afterthought. This one does not, and I just want to congratulate the team and the Smithsonian for the fine work, because I think it's a really lovely, lovely piece of work. And on 4B, I was just very curious, is there a photo of all these clocks? I would love to see. I was so disappointed when I read the text, and there was no image of these cool clocks.
I had the exact same thing. I was looking through the presentation, looking for a picture of the clocks. It's Mr. Hinkle's project.
Mr. Hinkle. All right, before you leave, you're going to have to give us those photographs. And on 4C, is there an intention to have visitors? Because on page 13, they have these ghost-like people pointing to the plane, and it doesn't appear to me to be a place where you would have visitors, but that just struck me as, was that just to show a scale? Or, I mean, I would love it, but...
Commissioner White, the...
Anne, you may want to introduce yourself.
Anne Trobridge of the Smithsonian Planning. The intention is that the visitors to the new collection storage module would only be special scholarly-type visitors or regents or that sort of thing on a tour. The people in the perspective are probably kind of standing near the bus stop for the public museum.
Yeah, it's a woman with a child.
Which is, they're near the parking lot there.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your compliments on the natural history entry as well.
Well, thank you for your work. It's really lovely.
Other questions or comments on any item on the consent calendar? Hearing none, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I have a question. Do you not want to say anything about the antenna?
I do. I was trying to make an action, and thank you for...
I would feel disoriented if you didn't.
I just, I still am struggling with understanding what's going on with the, I mean, I don't, this one looks more modest than many of the other ones that we received recently, but it's still very hard to understand what is actually being done. The pictures are grainy, they're shown from, you know, angles that I don't really know where you're looking at it from. I mean, it is, to some extent, it's a matter of what is actually visible from the street, but at a certain point, a lot of these, I mean, a lot of these things get added up to, you know, a single one isn't so bad, but when you've got 30 of them sort of all the way around, it becomes a problem. So, I just would long for more information, better information, not necessarily better installation. I can't, this is, I can't really tell that this is, I mean, this doesn't look too bad compared to some of the other ones we've seen, but just something a little better would be helpful. So, but, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, I feel better.
Good, I want to make you feel better.
Okay. Are you calling for a motion?
Yeah, I think there was moved, and it's been seconded, the consent calendar. Any additional discussion on the consent calendar? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Consent calendar is approved.
It just wouldn't be the same.
That's right.
Agenda item 5A is the approval of preliminary site development plans for Phase 1 of the White House fence replacement submitted to us by the National Park Service in coordination with the Secret Service, and we have Mr. Fliss. And before we get started, let me say just a word, if I could, about this project. National Capital Planning Commission has joined with the National Park Service and the U.S. Secret Service for more than a year in the investigation, planning, and preliminary design of a replacement White House fence. No one underestimates the significance of this project. We join the National Park Service and the Secret Service in recognizing the high priority of protecting the first family who called the White House home, as well as the many employees and visitors to the White House and its grounds. We also take seriously the need to balance security with a design that is appropriate for the historic buildings and grounds. There's been a White House, there's been a fence around the White House for about 213 years. Its design has evolved over time, and we are now at yet another time in its evolution. The existing White House fence is about eight feet high. The proposed replacement is about five feet higher, reaching a height of approximately 13 feet. It's tall, and both scale and design have been principal areas of concern. But we have all been privy to the care with which the National Park Service and the Secret Service and its design team have taken to this important project, and we appreciate the extent to which NCPC staff has been involved in design discussions along the way. And I particularly thank Tom Dougherty and his team for its outreach in recent weeks to this commission as we have prepared for the matter that is before us. To the public, do note that today we are considering the preliminary site development plan. The design before us today is likely to continue being refined in some details, and this commission and the public will have an additional opportunity to weigh in before final action is taken in the months ahead. So with that, again, Tom and Peter May, thank you for the collaboration with this commission and our staff on this exceedingly important project to the American people. With that, Mr. Fliss.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As mentioned, the National Park Service in cooperation with the United States Secret Service has submitted preliminary site development plans for Phase 1 of a new perimeter fencing gates at the White House complex for your review. As you may recall, this project came before the commission in July of this year as a concept design, and comments were provided by the commission to the applicants for their consideration as they continue to develop the project. The White House, as you know, is the executive office of the president and also the primary residence of the first family. The complex is located in downtown Washington, D.C., between Pennsylvania Avenue, E Street, 15th Street, and 17th Streets northwest. Zooming in just a little bit closer, the current location of the White House fence is outlined here in yellow. It encloses approximately 18 acres. The White House complex, though, is a broader area, which includes President's Park, Lafayette Park, the Eisenhower Executive Office Building, the Treasury Building, and the ellipse located to the south. This larger area encompasses over 82 acres, and also includes portions of Pennsylvania Avenue and E Street northwest, along with the White House, which is a national historic landmark. Here you can see more detailed site plan of the White House complex and the surrounding buildings. The commission is today considering a new perimeter fencing gates as the first phase of a comprehensive security plan. A future phase will also look at the Eisenhower Executive Office Building, as well as the Treasury Building. Phase 1 includes the new perimeter gate and fence surrounding the White House grounds, and this fence is approximately 3,500 feet in length, and generally follows along Pennsylvania Avenue to the north, East Executive Drive to the east, E Street to the south, and West Executive Drive to the west. The commission has reviewed several projects related to President's Park, as well as the White House complex. In 2001, NCPC proposed a redesign of Pennsylvania Avenue as a safe and beautiful pedestrian space, and the commission approved a final design in 2003, which is what you see on the site today. The reimagined corridor includes new paving, ballards, pedestrian amenities and furnishings like benches and lighting, as well as landscape plantings, really to support a space that is functional, publicly accessible, as well as secure. NCPC also worked on a design competition for President's Park South. In 2011, NCPC invited five design firms to develop concepts to beautify the security components and improve the visitor's experience. One of the most important aspects was to consider the future of E Street. As you're probably aware, E Street, between 15th and 17th Street, has been closed since 2001. Competition entrants were asked to redesign the street to accommodate pedestrians as well as bicyclists. Currently, a variety of ballards and other protective measures occupy the space along the street between the White House and the ellipse. Most recently, in the summer of 2015, the commission approved the temporary anti-climb measures, which were installed on the existing fence, and this is shown on the screen in front of you. The design and scale of these measures, including their visual impact on the public space, were some of the issues that were considered in evaluating the proposal while recognizing that a more permanent solution would be forthcoming in the future. And so now, moving on to the proposal before you today, the White House has had a low wall or fence since around 1800. Over time, it has continued to evolve, eventually reaching the form which you'd recognize on the site today. And of course, today, the site is a major visitor destination, and the White House and grounds are viewed and experienced through the fence from a variety of perspectives. As such, staff has evaluated the proposed perimeter fencing gates based upon a number of considerations, including historic preservation, urban design, and visitor experience. At concept review, the commission provided a number of comments, which have really helped to guide the development of the proposal, including those related to height, the fence top details, the picket size and spacing, and the pedestrian vehicular gates. In particular, the commission commented favorably on the 2-inch picket and 5-and-a-half-inch spacing, noting that the wider picket spacing might provide better visual access for visitors near the fence. The commission also requested the opportunity to view a full-size mock-up of the fence prior to this preliminary review, as well as several additional renderings and perspectives of the proposed fence to evaluate its impacts. The National Park Service and the United States Secret Service have coordinated to provide the mock-up you viewed on-site, and have also provided additional documentation as part of the submittal. Just as a reminder, you can see the existing fence is about eight feet tall, or about six feet of pickets on a two-foot base. The proposed fence will be 10 foot, 7 inches tall, that's the pickets, on an 18-inch stone base. Anti-climb measures are to be located on the top of the fence, and these would be about a foot in height. The existing stone piers would also be increased in scale, and these are these elements, to accommodate this new height. This reflects the United States Secret Service recommendation for the fence height, and this is consistent with your previous review in July. The design options that I'm going to walk you through for the remainder of the presentation all reflect the same height. These are some of the fence details that the commission supported at concept review for your reference. You can see the design includes the spear-shaped finials, and as well as the pencil-point anti-climb measures. This also shows the 5-and-a-half-inch picket spacing, which is also represented in the mock-up and the renderings that you're going to see. So I'll walk you through a series of renderings that have been prepared, showing these elements, including the height, the picket size and spacing, as well as some of the fence elements. This is the existing view and proposed view of the fence from Pennsylvania Avenue, looking towards the White House grounds with the existing condition on the left and the proposed on the right. Here's another proposed view, looking from just a different, slightly different perspective along the sidewalk, looking towards the White House. And this is a very similar view with a, looking at the mock-up on-site. Close-up viewing of the fence showed that the wider picket spacing helped preserve views to the grounds. In addition, the higher horizontal rail here also gave a more unobstructive view, since the existing top bar, which you can see in the distance here, generally appears at eye level when you're sitting, when you're standing on the sidewalk or in the street. And then, just as a reminder, as I walk through some of these images, the pier here is shown for the, shown in the mock-up only, but would only be located next to some of the gates, which I'll talk about later. This is, again, the existing view, looking from the middle of Pennsylvania Avenue. And then this would be a proposed view from generally the same location. And then this is an image looking from a little further back on Lafayette Park. Again, staff believes that the additional fence height is effectively accommodated by the wider public space formed by Pennsylvania Avenue, and therefore did not really feel out of scale at this particular location or condition. And then, on the other side of the White House grounds, this is a view, an existing view from E Street. And then this is a proposed view from a similar location. In general, based upon the review of the renderings and the inspection of the mock-up on-site, staff believes that both affirm that the wider picket spacing is appropriate in preserving views to the White House grounds, while the height of the fence is balanced by the width of the adjacent public space, particularly along Pennsylvania Avenue. The applicant has also continued to develop this proposal, and additional options for some of the anti-climb measures and gates have also been submitted for your review. I'm now going to walk you through some of those with some recommend, staff recommendations as well. As I had mentioned in the concept review, the elements at the top of the fence really provide additional design details while accommodating the anti-climb measures, which are intended to deter climbers from grasping the top bar. At concept review, the commission commented favorably on this fence design, which included the single spear, along with the series of pencil points as the anti-climb features. The design was preferred as it provided an appropriate hierarchy of ornamental and security elements, and limited the visual weight of the fence top itself. The design, this design also formed the basis for the mock-up. The applicant has continued to develop the details of this proposal, and has developed four options for the anti-climb measures. The first few options all utilize the pencil-point form previously seen by the commission, and all have relatively similar visual impacts. These options really vary only slightly in the pattern of the actual pencil-point height. Here in option A, you'll see that the pencil points have a peak, which aligns here at the midpoint of the, between the spears, and this really is aligning with the arch form, which is below. I'll also note, as I walk through these images, that the viewer never really sees this perspective of the fence top. You really see it at a distance or at an angle up, so although we're talking about the details, the viewer would never really have that direct view.
True.
Here in option 2, 1B, the pencil points follow a reverse curve. Again, the high point is actually aligned now with the finial. And then 1C, again, is just a slight variation, where there is a dip here with a higher point in the, in the middle. As I mentioned, viewed from a distance, I think all of these options are generally indistinguishable, indistinguishable due to their very small scale, but when observed in close proximity to the fence, the pencil points appear relatively simple and add further details to the fence design. Option 2, by contrast, includes a cross teeth with serrated edges. When observed in close proximity to the fence, this option appears similar to shards of glass, and appears rather defensive in character. Therefore, staff believes this option appears less inviting as compared to the previous As such, staff recommends the commission continue to support the use of the pencil, pencil-point anti-climb measures as a best-balanced security and a design in an unobtrusive manner. Further, staff recommends the commission not support the cross-teeth anti-climb measures as they emphasize a defensive character and are not well-integrated into the fence design, and generally detract from the visitor experience. Now, moving on to the gates, the pedestrian vehicular access points are proposed to be replaced also as part of this project. Nine pedestrian gates and six vehicular gates are proposed to be replaced generally in their current locations. The site plan on the screen in front of you shows their locations. And then these are some images of the existing gates for your reference. You'll notice that some of the gates are flanked by the stone piers here, and there are some existing light features along Pennsylvania Avenue, shown here, which are intended to be retained. Following the concept review, the Park Service and Secret Service further evaluated the crash protection for the vehicular gates, and based upon this analysis, two general gate options are proposed, including first, a crash-rated gate, or second, a non-crash-rated gate with some additional security measures, which could be in the form of ballards or a wedge barrier. And these are essentially shown on the screen. One where you would have a crash-rated gate, and the other two where you would have a non-crash-rated gate, and then either a wedge or ballards. The urban design element of the comprehensive plan provides some guidance regarding these security measures, stating that vehicular control measures that are visible from the public space should be attractively designed, and mechanical equipment should not, should be hidden. Solid hydraulic plate barriers should only be used in locations that are not highly visible from the public space. The first option, as I mentioned, is a crash-rated gate design that requires a more substantial structural support, and therefore results in a somewhat solid fence base, and I'm highlighting that area here. This type of solid base is not generally consistent with the current White House gates, which tend to be more open, but in this option, no other security measures would be required because they're essentially built into the gate itself. The other option includes a more standard gate without any additional structural supports, and this allows the design to retain the architectural detail and openness you generally see in the current gates, and that, this is this area here. However, additional security measures would be required in the form of ballards or the wedge barrier, which would be installed just inside the gate. And then this is the same, essentially the same rendering, the same image, which shows the security barriers ghosted into the back. So you can see here, this decorative element, which is open to beyond, and you can see the ballards here, and the wedge barrier in the distance here. Along East and West Executive Drives, you would have the same condition. Here, you would see a crash-rated design with a more solid base. And the alternative, also on East and West Executive Drive, would be something that would be more open. This is the non-crash-rated gate, but they would require some additional security measures. As I mentioned, a crash-rated gate may result in a more substantial structure with a solid base, but it would also eliminate the need for other security measures like ballards. Therefore, staff is recommending the commission support a vehicular gate design that minimizes solid elements, reduces visual clutter, and also maintains open views to the White House grounds. Further, staff recommends that the commission does not, not support the use of the crash-rated wedge barrier, as they would be highly visible from the surrounding public streets and sidewalks, and we understand from the Secret Service that they are also supportive of this recommendation. As I had noted previously, the existing stone piers would have to be increased to accommodate the new fence height. This is an image of the existing piers, which are about nine to 10 feet in height, and they have about a three-foot square base. The new piers would be approximately 15 feet tall and four foot square. These piers, you probably noticed on Pennsylvania Avenue, are generally located at the corners and then also adjacent to the gates which enter along Pennsylvania Avenue. There are also several piers on East and West Executive Drive. Given their scale and massing, staff suggests that the Park Service and Secret Service consider reducing the scale of the piers where feasible. In addition, it might be appropriate to eliminate the piers from the pedestrian gates, which I'm showing right here. Doing so would actually help to reduce the number of large-scale piers along the fence, especially in where there's this grouping shown here. This is the vehicular gate and the pedestrian gates. Removing these piers would also help the vehicular entrances stand as distinct from other gates. Staff believes that, again, the multiple piers in this particular location create a substantial solid mass along the fence that blocks views into the White House grounds. You'll also note in that this particular rendering, some kind of security measure would be required in the distance. As such, staff is recommending the commission request the applicant reduce the size and scale of the fence piers where possible, and also evaluate whether the piers may be removed from the pedestrian gates along Pennsylvania Avenue. And then finally, regarding the landscape, at concept review, the commission requested the fence base and foundation be designed to avoid unnecessary impacts to the root zone of any significant trees. The applicant has provided some additional information that indicates the protection and preservation of trees on the grounds, and these are some examples of some of the documentation that they've provided. This would be the, an example of the northeast corner of the site. And this is a, an example of the southeast corner of the site. Any trees that are removed will be replaced in kind, and staff has reviewed the submission and is comfortable that the appropriate protective measures are going to be taken to preserve the landscape where necessary. Overall, the applicant has been responsive to the commission's comments, and will continue to develop the finer details of the fence design. As I noted earlier, staff believes the mock-up and renderings both show that the wider picket spacing is appropriate in preserving views to the White House grounds, and the height of the fence is balanced by the width of the adjacent public space, particularly along Pennsylvania Avenue. However, future phases should strongly consider the impact of additional height on more constrained public spaces such as 15th and 17th Street. And therefore, it is the executive director's recommendation that the commission approves the preliminary site development plans for Phase 1 of the new perimeter fencing gates at the White House complex, notes that the temporary security measures were approved with the understanding that a more lasting solution would be developed, state their support for the comprehensive permanent measures to address security, the security needs of the White House complex. Further, the commission support the use of pencil-point anti-climb measures as they best balance security needs with an unobtrusive design, and does not support the cross-teeth option due to its defensive character. Also requests the piers to be reduced in size where possible, and asks the applicant to evaluate if the piers can be removed from the pedestrian gates, supports a vehicular gate design with a minimal solid elements, and maintains views, and does not support the use of a crash-rated wedge barrier. And finally, notes that the project components will continue to be refined prior to final review by the commission. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I believe we also have Mr. Tom Dougherty with the Secret the Secret, United States Secret Service, who provides some brief comments.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Doherty, welcome back.
Thank you, Chairman Bryant. Appreciate it very much. Matt, thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. Just a moment. I wanted to thank the commission and also Chairman Bryant, particularly by, from Director Clancy, for being involved in this process. This is an important national security initiative effort, and our working process with NCPC staff has been just absolutely very important and very helpful. Thank you very much, Mr. Acosta. With that, thank you very much. The proposed plans and recommendations by staff comport with Secret Service's protective needs, and we thank you very much for any other questions or thoughts that you want to have on this. Thank you so much.
With that, we don't have any other comment today, so may I turn it over to Peter May, National Park Service, who's been very much involved?
Thank you very much. I don't have a whole lot to say. I appreciate everything that's in the executive director's report, and it is consistent with where we, what we prefer and where we are heading with the development of the design. And I appreciate all the efforts of staff to work with us on it, certainly our partners with the Secret Service and all of their efforts to bring this along in a cooperative manner and be sensitive to the concerns that the Park Service brings to the discussion. And of course, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your remarks at the beginning of our taking up this topic in support of the effort so far. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I'd be happy to make a motion when that's ready, when you're ready.
Motion's in order at any time. Motion's in order at any time, but I think there may be some discussion still. Mr. Gauss?
I was particularly vocal about the picket widths, the distance of clearance between the pickets. And what I really very much appreciate is the work that you all did to try to achieve a wider width. I think that the aesthetic that you're showing in these images really makes a difference in the sort of perception of a more porous viewing corridor rather than a wall. And the ability to do that while still hopefully maintaining the integrity of the security that's required to achieve this is, really, I think, an example of how we can achieve both good design and achieve the result that we're seeking. And so I really want to thank you for that. I think that the end result will be substantially improved as a result of your work. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. White?
And someone else who's been pretty vocal about concerns. I also want to say how much I appreciate the patience and the work in answering all the questions and concerns and the sensitivity to seeking the balance between the paramount concerns for security with the importance of visual access and the symbolism of what the White House means to the nation. And it's not an easy thing, and I know there are more details to work through, but I think this is a big improvement over where we started. And I also appreciate, we ask for more renderings and ability to understand what it would look like, and these are really helpful in the analysis to see those compared to what we had seen early on. So thank you, and I hope we can continue to refine it and make it the best it can be.
Well, the questions or comments? Yeah, please.
Can you go back to the rendering of the piers that, there, the drawing, the drawing? Is that, are those accurate? I mean, the dimensions? I guess I'm, go.
Scale?
Yeah, I mean, well, I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is that the lamps are going to be, wow, you know, pretty tall. And so while I'm sure there's an impulse for historic preservation to leave them alone, I hope we won't because once these things are on top of a, how many-foot pier?
14. 14 to 15 feet tall.
The fence is 13. Wow, that'll look really goofy, to use a technical term. So I hope that there'll be some reasonable accommodation for that, even though it would be anti-preservation. The pole, there's some room, I suppose, to shorten it, I hope. It just seems to me to be the one, the one note that is a little bit tough to swallow.
If I could speak to that briefly, you know, that was, that was a reaction of a number of people as we were trying to draw it up. But when we actually looked at it in the field with the mock-up and seeing the actual lamp posts there, yeah, I mean, a number of us, and I can't quantify who was speaking at any point, but among the design team certainly, and my colleagues, we actually became more comfortable with the idea of simply reusing these fixtures in that, on top of the enlarged pier. We'll certainly take a look at it again, and we could probably do some photo simulations of that, you know, something that really gives a good sense of the size and scale of it.
Okay. But I mean, I was sort of, I looked at these 100 times in real life, and I was really struck by, they're not exactly, sorry. They're, they're not a huge success now. It seems to me, they may be better, but...
Well, that was the thing, is that we sort of thought they kind of looked better.
Yeah, I mean, I think they're, they're a little off from my way of thinking now. So I just want to raise it as a thing that we look at carefully.
That's certainly something that we'll look at as we continue to refine, and we'll be back very soon with that. Thank you.
So when I went out and looked at the mock-up of the fence design, actually, a lot of the scale, I felt a lot better with it. I thought there's a lot better kind of view sheds of the second floor when you're close to it. The thing that really struck me that I didn't get from these pictures is the, or the intermediate pickets, where the proposed design, it just takes the existing small spear, about two inches it looks like or so, and essentially doubles it in size and blows it up. And that was actually, it just looks very much like it's spiking up a lot more than the current one, the current design where it actually uses a variation on those intermediate pickets. And I feel like, when I saw the mock-up, that was the most telling thing, is that that picket really looks like a really big spear now, whereas the current design uses something different on those intermediate piers, which is actually like a variation on what now will become this ball. So I still know from sign perspective, looking at if there's, it just seems like it's missing an opportunity or something because it's just replicating these little spheres and not kind of, it's losing a decorative element of the current thing, or maybe not decorative, but unique.
So we also got a lot of feedback on that, on that in particular. That's one of those, there are few particularly, you know, problematic, small components of the, of the assembly. And we, there are a number of things that we've talked about doing to try to make those enlarged spear points more, more comfortable and fit better with the overall composition. I don't think that we would go as fancy as what's there now for the intermediate posts, but something that's certainly different and has a different relationship to the post than this very simplified version of what you see there now. So, yeah, we're definitely going to be working on that. That'll be refined. I would make a motion to approve the executive director's recommendation.
Been proudly moved, has been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the EDR is presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Fliss. Mr. Doherty, thank you very much. See you soon. Agenda item 5B is approval of comments on the concept design of the Franklin D., President Franklin D. Roosevelt prayer plaque at the National World War II Memorial, and it's brought to us by the National Park Service. We have Ms. Spiegel.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The National Park Service, on behalf of the Friends of the World War II Memorial, has submitted site plan concepts for the Franklin D. Roosevelt prayer plaque for your review and comment. In June of 2014, Congress passed Public Law 113-123, which directs the Secretary of the Interior to install a suitable plaque or inscription within the area of the World War II Memorial with the words that President Franklin D. Roosevelt prayed on D-Day. The World War II Memorial was constructed in 2004 and honors the 16 million who served in the U.S. Armed Forces during the Second World War. Here you see the memorial primary precinct. The area in red between the Atlantic Arch and Constitution Gardens is known as the Circle of Remembrance. It is part of the World War II Memorial grounds and was designed to be a quiet counterpoint to the grand and bustling space at the center of the memorial. The Circle of Remembrance was selected as the general site of the FDR prayer plaque by our commission in November 2015. The Commission of Fine Arts and the National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission, or NICMAC, also supported this location. D-Day, one of the deadliest days of the war, launched the Allied invasion in an effort to liberate mainland Europe from Nazi control. The night before, Americans clustered around radios and offices, factories, and homes listening to news from across the Atlantic. President Roosevelt sought to calm an anxious nation as tens of thousands of American and Allied forces besieged the coast of Normandy. FDR's Prayer with the Nation, shown to the right here, broadcasted on D-Day, June 6, 1944, is roughly 500 words in length and was spoken in a slow and deliberate cadence as the nation contemplated the day of the invasion. To provide a brief process overview, Congress authorized the installation of President Roosevelt's Prayer within the vicinity of World War II, the World War II Memorial, with Public Law 113-123. The law states that the Commemorative Works Act, or CWA, applies to the site selection and design of the plaque. The CWA is a federal law that guides the memorial's process in D.C. The general site selection came before NICMAC, CFA, and NCPC last year. Our commission is now commenting on the specific site plan and design before the applicant continues design development. CFA has already reviewed and commented on the alternative site plans. After our commission comments, the applicants will develop designs within the preferred location. In the future, the design will return to our commission for approval. As I mentioned previously, the commission reviewed this project for general site selection last year. From the four site alternatives presented by the applicant, the commission supported selecting Site A, the Circle of Remembrance, for the FDR prayer plaque. What is before you today is a refined site location. There are two alternative sites for the plaque within the Circle of Remembrance. The first is at the planter edge, and the second is at the circle edge. The National Park Service and Friends of the World War II Memorial, with the assistance of Om Von Sweden, the landscape architects for the World War II Memorial grounds, established the following criteria for evaluating the design alternatives. The first four relate to locating the D-Day prayer at the Circle of Remembrance, and the last four relate to the aesthetics and visitor experience. The existing material palette at the Circle of Remembrance consists of rusticated fieldstone retaining walls and Victorian park benches, very similar in character to Constitution Gardens. However, these materials are unlike the primary World War II memorial precinct, which consists of various, various types of granite and metal embellishments. As we look at both site plan alternatives, it is important to keep in mind that in addition to the prayer plaque, they include modifications to the retaining wall, benches, and pavers, including infilling the circular vegetated planter at the center of the Circle of Remembrance. And this is done in order to be consistent with the character of the primary memorial precinct and was the original design intent for the space.
Remind me, before you leave, that other slide. Can you go back one? Or in the lower left, are all of the pathways shown there now?
Yes, those are existing. So Alternative 1 locates a nearly square, roughly four feet by five feet wide, freestanding bronze plaque within the existing vegetative planter at the entry to the Circle of Remembrance. The plaque and granite tablet would be located at a shallow angle close to the ground and project toward the center of the planter. This alternative does not alter the existing circulation and visitation patterns. Visitors could read the plaque from the sidewalk adjacent to the existing planter while looking towards the World War II Memorial in the background. However, the low height and configuration of the plaque within the planting bed could inhibit legibility. This alternative positions the plaque as an addition, separate from the Circle of And now we have the recommended preferred alternative. Alternative 2 completes the form of the circle by locating a rectangular, roughly three feet tall by nine feet wide, freestanding bronze plaque at the edge of the Circle of Remembrance. The curved, excuse me, the curved plaque and granite wall would conform to the geometry of the circle and would be separated from the retaining wall and benches by two pedestrian pathways. For a sense of scale, please refer to the mock-up just to the right of the screen over This alternative slightly alters the existing circulation and visitation patterns. The sidewalks leading to the entry of the Circle of Remembrance would be widened, and the existing planting area would be reduced and aligned with the outside edge of the curved granite wall. Visitors could stand close to the plaque to read the inscription from within the Circle of Remembrance while looking towards the World War II Memorial. This alternative integrates the addition of the freestanding plaque in a manner that enhances the circle and is geometrically and materially related with proposed improvements to the Circle of Remembrance. As mentioned previously, both alternatives would change the existing materials within the Circle of Remembrance in order to be more consistent with the primary memorial precinct. Here is an example of the bench details used at the World War II Memorial with gently rounded edges. The Circle of Remembrance would use similar details but at a scale compatible with the intimate space of the circle. The new granite paving within the Circle of Remembrance would also be consistent with the World War II Memorial. The applicant is considering using a medium gray color of granite, such as the moss green, which is number three shown here, in order to harmonize with the surrounding landscape context. The plaque and other metal embellishments would also take material cues from the primary memorial. Therefore, it is the executive director's recommendation that the commission supports Alternative 2, locating the freestanding prayer plaque at the edge of the Circle of Remembrance and thereby completing the form of the circle, noting the material change to granite and away from the rusticated materials that it currently uses. The commission recommends the sponsor continue to refine the design of the prayer plaque such that it is complementary with the proposed retaining walls and benches at the Circle of Remembrance. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions, and I believe the Park Service is also here as well.
Thank you, Ms. Spiegel. Matters before the commission? Mr. May, you have anything?
Not much to say. Thank you very much for the report. It supports the direction I think we're consistent with where we'd like to head, so we're pleased to get this additional blessing and refinement of the site and look forward to developing the design.
Is there a motion on the EDR?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Is there additional discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the EDR is presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Last item on the agenda is agenda... Last item on the agenda is Agenda Item Number 5C. That's Approval of Preliminary and Final Site and Building Plans for the National China Garden, and that is brought to us by the National Arboretum. And we have Ms. Lee.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. The United States Department of Agriculture, in collaboration with the National China Garden Foundation, has submitted preliminary and final site and building plans for the National China Garden at the National Arboretum. The review process for the National China Garden started nine years ago. In 2007, the Commission approved a master plan modification for the National Arboretum and commented favorably on the Chinese garden concept design. If you recall, last December, the Commission reviewed the revised concept design for the National China Garden. Today, we will share the preliminary and final plans, which seek to balance historic preservation, urban design, and sustainability to achieve a faithful representation of a traditional Chinese garden that is sensitive to the context. So the vision for the National China Garden builds upon formal agreements between China's State Forestry Administration and the USDA to build a classical Chinese garden in the nation's capital as a gift to the American people. In 2008, Congress authorized construction of the project at the National Arboretum. The purpose of this gift is to create the finest example of a classical Chinese garden in the United States to deepen the understanding of Chinese garden culture and enhance the friendship between the two nations. The National Arboretum was established by Congress in 1927 and opened to the public in 1959. It is the only federally funded arboretum in the nation. Its mission is research and education. It's listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The arboretum is located on a 446-acre site, two miles from the U.S. Capitol in northeast Washington, D.C. It's bound by New York Avenue to the north, M Street to the south, Plathamsburg Road to the west, and the Anacostia River to the east. Visitor entrances are located at the intersection of Art and 24 Streets and along New York Avenue, as the purple circles indicate. As you can see, the existing buildings are clustered in the northwestern portion of the campus, and the remainder of the arboretum is occupied by open areas, woodlands, and plant collections. The topography of the arboretum is defined by two high points, as you can see in this slide, a central valley and a creek running through the center of the campus. The proposed China Garden is located on the eastern area of the arboretum on a 12-acre site. Currently, the site is a meadow. It is located next to Hickey Hill and the Anacostia River. The site is surrounded by several plant collections. I note that there is a stand of pine trees planted on the western slope of the hill, forming a V-shaped opening that allows views of the city. The site was selected because of its proximity to Asian collections, topography, consisting of a gently sloping meadow with hills in the background, following Chinese garden design principles, its size, and also it resulted in the least negative impacts on existing collections and natural areas. Here is a comparison of previous and existing site conditions. As shown in the picture on the left, in 2000, until 2004, the site was a regularly mowed grassy area and was used for overflow parking during peak events. Over time, the site evolved into a meadow due to lack of frequent mowing. As you can see in the picture on the right, today, the vegetation consists of shrubs, grasses, and a few scattered trees. Here are more images of existing conditions. In picture number one, you can see the existing meadow in the foreground and the stand of pine trees in the background. In the second picture, you can see the tree opening that allows framed views of the city, and in the third picture, you can see the basilica from the side. In 2007, NCPC approved a master plan modification that included a concept design for the Chinese garden complex at the current project location. Staff finds that the proposed design layout is consistent with the master plan. So there are three kinds of classical Chinese gardens: residential gardens, which is a courtyard enclosed by a wall; lakeside, which includes pavilions and bridges around a lake; and forest garden, which includes a single structure located on a hill. Classical Chinese gardens are composed of five key elements: rock, water, scenic views, plants, and artwork to create a balance between natural and man-made structures. This proposed, the proposed design includes an example of each garden type. Moving on to staff analysis, overall, the final design addresses the Commission's previous recommendations. The applicant has continued to work closely with NCPC, the D.C. Historic Preservation Office, and the Commission of Fine Arts to improve the final design. First, I'll give you an overview of the plan, and then I'll focus on how the applicant responded to previous comments. So here you can see the different types of gardens represented in the complex. The proposed complex includes two examples of residential gardens, a lake garden, and a forest garden. It also includes a service building and visitor and staff parking on the northwestern corner of the site, and overflow parking on support of grass further to the south. So now we'll explain how the applicant responded to the previous comments. The Commission requested additional simulations regarding the visual impacts of the China garden from both the arboretum and from areas around the city. Here are some precedent images of what the structures will look like within the garden. These images are examples of the residential garden. Here are examples of the structures within the lakeside garden. And here are examples of the structures within the forest garden. In these sections, you can see the relationship of the structures with the topography, as well as the sequence of structures and their visual impacts. The red dashed line indicates the existing grade, and the brown shade indicates the proposed grade. The east-west section, located at the bottom of the slide, includes a vegetated berm along Holy Spring Road on the west. This berm is the result of the cottonfield balance needed to create the central lake. Here are the existing conditions at the intersection of Holy Spring and Meadow Roads, and here is the proposed conditions. This image shows the changes in the topography and how the vegetation is designed to provide a gradual transition from the surrounding plant collections to the China garden. You can see here the vegetated berm, an accessible path, and the main entrance along Holy Spring Roads with monumental stairs, and the garden structures beyond. The Commission also expressed specific concerns regarding the visual impacts of the White Pagoda, because this is a 71-foot-tall structure located on a hill. The applicant explored two locations for the pagoda. Alternative 1, on the left, located the pagoda within the existing clearing, and Alternative 2, on the right, moved the pagoda to the west of the clearing within the forest. NCPC and the SHPO support the location of the pagoda outside the historic view shed, which is the applicant's preferred alternative. In order to further minimize visual impacts, the applicant explored another alternative where the pagoda was located further down the hill, as you can see in Alternative 2 at the bottom of the slide. This location reflects the latest design. As part of the Section 106 process, the applicant modeled 14 views from key sites around the city and within the arboretum. The analysis showed that because of the vegetation and topography, the visual impacts are minimal. With regards to lighting, the Commission recommended to minimize light pollution from the garden in the surrounding neighborhoods and ensure that the lighting does not impact views within the district. The latest plan minimizes lighting to a more modest and traditional approach. The lighting plan includes special illumination for the main entry rockery, the White Pagoda, and the five pavilion terrace. It includes traditional post-lighting along pathways and hanging lanterns in each pavilion. Overall, lighting will not be visible outside the arboretum due to topography and tree cover. However, a few evenings per year, when there are special events, the top of the pagoda will be softly lit, as you can see in the picture. Moving on to accessibility and pedestrian amenities, during concept review, the Commission recommended that the applicant identify locations for tram stops, bus stopoff areas, and bicycle racks. As you can see here, the final plan identifies two locations for tram and bus stopoff areas along Holy Spring Road and bicycle racks located near the northwest parking lot. The Commission recommended to improve pedestrian circulation. As a result, the applicant provided a pedestrian circulation network around the garden and ensured that the garden is universally accessible. In this diagram, you can see that the blue line represents accessible paths throughout the garden. The design team has identified bench locations along walkways to enhance the pedestrian experience, considering shade and views as recommended by the Commission. You can see the location of the benches highlighted in brown in this graphic. Moving on to landscape and sustainability, last December, the Commission recommended the applicant to identify and protect specimen trees, minimize vegetation, and minimize vegetation removal. Within the 12-acre site, 25 trees will be preserved in place, and 120 trees will need to be removed. To mitigate the removal of these trees, the applicant is transplanting 51 of the trees to another location in the arboretum. The applicant is also going to add 749 new trees on the 12-acre site. This image shows an example of the proposed landscape. The planting plan consists of trees, shrubs, and aquatic plants. So here is another image of the proposed landscape. As I mentioned earlier, the land where the China garden is to be located has occasionally served as overflow parking in the past. An earlier master plan for the arboretum shows the area as both parking and meadow. Irregular mowing and maintenance has resulted in the meadow-like habitat that exists today. During the NIBA process, the District Department of Energy and Environment and a few other organizations, including the D.C. Autobahn Society, raised concerns regarding the loss of meadow habitat and impacts on wildlife, including pollinators migrating and native bird species. The applicant takes these concerns and protection of the environment very seriously and have committed to the following. Working with the OEE and other interested parties to address the loss of meadow habitat, maintaining and creating additional meadow habitat within the arboretum as part of the master plan update, the applicant has indicated that there are no other major projects over the next few years before the future master plan update. This will allow time to analyze existing and potential meadow habitats in the master plan. The applicant has committed to defining mitigation measures to enhance meadow habitat without compromising the arboretum's research and education mission and transitioning mowed areas of grass to low-maintenance areas. Staff notes that the applicant will work with the OEE to conduct a bee survey at the arboretum in order to determine whether any rare bee species are present. The findings of the survey will inform the master plan update and efforts to enhance meadow habitat within the arboretum. Moving on to stormwater management, 35% of the 12-acre site will be impervious area. To mitigate runoff, the project includes permeable pavement systems highlighted in green, three bio-retention facilities highlighted in purple, a stormwater management lake highlighted in blue, and tree planting and preservation highlighted in orange. According to the submission materials, the project complies with local and federal regulations. Finally, the Commission raised a few other general comments, which the applicant has They have provided a vegetated buffer to screen the maintenance building along Holy Spring Road, consolidated parking to provide a more efficient layout and minimize number of curb cuts, and ensure that the proposed structures, including service buildings, have a compatible architectural vocabulary consistent with the Chinese complex. Lastly, during concept review, the Commission raised concerns about maintenance. To address those concerns, staff notes that the National China Garden Foundation, a nonprofit organization, has been established to raise the necessary funds to maintain the garden for the public's enjoyment. And so with that, the Executive Director's recommendation is for the Commission to approve the preliminary and final site and building plans for the National China Garden, find that the applicant has modified the design to respond to previous comments, request the USDA review and update the master plan, note that the applicant has committed to several mitigation measures as described during the presentation, adopt the USDA finding of no significant impact for the National China Garden, and note that any substantial changes to the project are required to be submitted to the Commission for review. With this, I conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And also, Dr. Richard Olson, Director of the Arboretum, is here to speak on behalf of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Dr. Olson, would you like to, for the record, state your name and such?
I am Dr. Richard Olson, Director of the U.S. National Arboretum. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Executive Director of Costa and the Commission and staff for reviewing this project. I think Ms. Lee has done a wonderful job reviewing our commitment to this project, the importance of this project, and what we're committed to in terms of mitigation, but I thought I would just run through a few points real quick to highlight. It's important to note that we are, first and foremost, a federal research, collections-based research institute and public garden established by an act of Congress in 1927, and as such, collections are important. We've been going to China since 1980, since China opened up. We were the leader with our peers to go to China to collect plants, and we've been on more than 15 expeditions since. So our collections have been augmented with Chinese plants and Asian plants in particular since we've founded the arboretum. This is balanced and complemented with our extensive collections of North American native plants. The two go hand in hand, and it's important for our research efforts. So we do take very seriously that this is a meadow. And since 2004, we have actually decreased the amount of turks at the National Arboretum from 200 acres to about 130. So we've turned 59 of those acres into what we would loosely term meadows, and we're committed to doing more. We do recognize the value these have. We've also participated in more than a decade with the Department of Energy, Environment, and Wildlife surveys. Many people do not realize that the National Arboretum is, in fact, one of the most biodiverse areas in Washington, D.C. because of our diversity of habitat. So we do recognize that. And yes, the bald eagles are back, and we will have a camera. But, so we are committed to that. ARS has committed to pollination research. We have scientists in Belsville, and we have scientists at the Smithsonian that work with bees, and we are definitely moving forward on understanding pollinators. That is an important issue nowadays, and we certainly don't want to be viewed as being behind on that. And we have already reached out to some of our other partners. We have worked with the American Bird Conservancy to, these are new stakeholders for us that traditionally, in the last 20 years, we've not worked with. But things are changing in Washington, D.C. We are 1% of Washington, D.C. We're very important, open and green space, and we want to build on that. And we will do so with a new master planning process, reviewing that, and also reviewing our national historic registration, which has not been looked at in more than four decades. So I think we're committed, and I think it's a wonderful project. I hope you see it that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm sorry, any questions for Dr. Olson? And I know you have other folks here as well, so. Discussion among the Commission members. Comments? It's an exciting project. Been in the works for a long time. Hearing no discussion. Is there a motion on the EDR? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR say aye. Propose no. Thank you, it's passed. Thank you very much for all of your hard work on this long project. Thank you. There is nothing, I don't, there's nothing else I do not believe coming before us, unless anyone has anything. Hearing none, thank you for a good meeting, and the Commission will rise.